Couple minutes.
I'm waiting for the, for the production crew. Ready? Good evening and welcome to the November City Council meeting. It's an exciting night in a lot of ways. And it's an honor for me to have our, our mayor for so many years in, in attendance tonight. And I'm glad to have you, Glendale and Pat. Thank y'all for, for coming tonight. It, uh, it's an exciting time in Meven. We've got a lot of great things happening and, uh, but before we have our invocation, I want to have a moment of silence for a couple of friends that have passed away this past week. One is a gentleman by the name of Eldon Nance, a long time Meven resident. He did a tremendous amount for Meven over the years. And the other one is Reverend Gary Hendricks, the pastor at Grace Reform. And, uh, they both, they both contributed so much to, uh, to Meven and, um, in a lot of people's lives. So, uh, one moment of silence and I'm going to ask Tim Bradley to say, to have our invocation.
Let us pray. I, him, the Father, Lord, we're grateful for the opportunity to come together to discuss the business of our small town. Lord, we just, uh, ask blessings upon those who have served, those who continue to serve in our community in so many ways. Lord, we just ask that our country be at peace tomorrow regardless of the outcome of the election. And Lord, we, uh, ask that you keep us safe. We thank you for our safety. We promise to give you praise in all we say and do. Amen.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we, we normally have public comments. Uh, Stephanie, order, order any?
Your Honor, I have several public comments tonight. You'll spare with me while I read them out loud for you. My name is Michael Hosey. I live in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I am the Senior Leader of United Fellowship Alliance in the city of Winston-Salem. Mr. Leonier Jones is a trusted friend and supporter of our organization. He has proven himself to be a leader of true integrity and upstanding moral character. As a community leader myself, I eagerly support this worthwhile and timely endeavor for the city and community of Meven. The challenge of racial reconciliation and diversity education is paramount for our success as a nation, especially during such tension and unrest. The program Mr. Jones is proposing, I believe, will be a tremendous asset to the city of Meven as well as the neighboring communities that are here. It is my sincere hope that genuine consideration along with appropriate action will be given to this proposal. Respectfully yours, Reverend Michael Hosey.
Hello, my name is Latoya Foster. I am a resident of Meven, E. Medlin, in support of the Minority Advisory Committee. I am also committing my support for my good friend Tommy Jones, who brought this to my attention. Thank you for your time. If there's anything else I can do, please let me know. Public comment from John Dotson, council members. I'm rising in support of Mr. Jones's Minority Advisory Council presented at the October 5th meeting. As a lifetime resident of Allens County, employee with Allens Brown Fiscal System, and resident of Meven for the past 10 years, I have come to value the viewpoints of those that do not look like nor live like I do. As the son of a businessman, I was taught to value the viewpoints of everyone in an organization so that areas of need in one department could be rectified and keeps the group as a whole from having to experience additional difficulties. I was also taught that where people are recognized and listened to, they will stay and invest their time and energy. I believe this council would be a valuable platform for those in the community that don't often connect with the city council. It would provide a venue to be recognized, heard, and helped. As I look at our growing community and current events, I'm reminded of a piece of advice. If you want to know how inclusive you really are, look at who you invite to your dinner table. I hope this council is approved and provides support and information to the council in a way that invites and welcomes members of our community to be engaged and invest their time, energy, and money into Meven. Thank you for your time, John Dotson, 1105 Newbury Drive, Meven, North Carolina. This is a recommendation to establish an office of racial equity to address systemic racism across the city of Meven and advance equitable outcomes for our communities. The challenge: For centuries, people of color have experienced inequality and systemic and institutionalized racism. As of the 2010 census, the racial makeup of Meven was 73.5% white, 20.4% black, 0.5% Native American, 1.2% Asian, 0.0% Pacific Islander, 0.2% from the other races, and 2.6% from two or more races. Hispanic or Latino of any race were 6% of the population. Decades of underinvestment and unjust systems in Meven have left black, brown, indigenous communities with high levels of poverty, a lack of quality jobs and education opportunities, outdated and weak in critical infrastructure, disproportionately high costs for energy, basic necessities, and limited access to public services. Moreover, black and brown communities have long been excluded from policy and funding decision-making processes that can be used to address the injustices they experience and support a transition to healthy communities. The solution: The city of Meven must establish an Office of Racial Equity, and I recommend Tommy Jones to lead that charge. Now more than ever, we have to embrace racial equity, which means transforming the behaviors, institutions, and systems that disproportionately harm marginalized communities by increasing access to power, redistributing and providing additional resources, and then eliminating barriers to opportunity to empower low-income communities of color to thrive and reach their full potential. Establishing an Office of Racial Equity will help Meven practicing equity, turning our commitment into actionable equity strategies in our immediate response to the crisis and our recovery efforts in as the world reshapes the global economy. Tommy Jones would work to make that equity a reality. The Meven Office of Racial Equity. I highly recommend Jones, Tommy Jones, for the Office of Racial Equity. His experience will allow him to identify existing policies and practices in the city that will contribute to uphold, exacerbate racial disparities, and develop proposals to address these disparities. As a high-ranking member of the Freemasonry or Masonry Fraternal Organization, Mr. Jones has a longstanding history of developing various branches of the Masons and therefore is knowledgeable on enacting measures to support capacity building and provide technical assistance to citywide agencies to invest in strategies for racial equity, including employing, training, and support development of racial equity programs and assistance to departments to change departmental policies and practices to improve racial equity outcomes. Sincerely, Annette W. Lancaster. And a final public comment from Anthony Pierce. I would like to submit a public comment supported by the committee spearheaded by Mr. Tommy Jones, designed to bring a voice from the minority community in Meven. As the Political Action Committee Chairman for the Allens branch of the NAACP, we feel this is a great opportunity for this committee to work alongside with the Meven City Council leadership to address issues that face our minority Meven community. We applaud the council's efforts for their willingness to collaborate, and it is our hope that the council authorizes this committee in their next meeting. Anthony Pierce, PAC Chair, A-N-A-C-P. That concludes the public comment.
Good deal. Thank you, thank you. It is indeed an honor to welcome tonight our newest Board of Adjustment candidate. And she is to come forward with Stephanie for the oath. Looking forward to her serving on the board. Ms. Janice Akins, welcome.
Okay. Go slowly, you're looking on the Bible and raise your hand. Record after me. I state your name.
I'm Janice Akins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of Acturline.
And the Constitution and laws.
Not inconsistent therewith. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of my office. As a Board of Adjustment member. Thank you. Congratulations. And we'll just have you come off on the quasi-dutational hearing.
Okay, thank you so much.
Janice, thank you so much for volunteering and accepting the, uh, the Board of Adjustment, uh, membership. And I look forward to, uh, having you here for many years. And thank you for your contribution. All right, at this time, the consent agenda. First part of consent agenda, approval of minutes of October 5th, 2020, the virtual regular meeting that we had. Our council meeting procedures, our resolution and policies. Just go along. Yeah, okay. Uh, the final plat of Keystone, Phase 2, 1A. The final plat of the Meadows, Phase 2B. The petition for voluntary non-contiguous annexation on West 10 Road. The petition for voluntary non-contiguous annexation for signature flooring out on Meven Up's Road. The petition for voluntary non-contiguous annexation for Haven Stone, Phase 1.
Isn't, uh, excuse me, isn't Haven Stone contiguous? It is. It is continuing.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm reading it off the sheet, but it is voluntary. I'm sorry. They have it right on this printout and not on the, on the thing. Okay, good. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bradley. And then the last was appoint Audrey, Audrey Vogel as an Alamaz County Review Officer. Were there any comments that the council would like to ask at this time?
I believe that item 3B about procedures, the resolution and policy, requires us to make a decision on paragraph 6.
That is right, Ms. Phillips, to decide whether you want to allow participation by the public at your traditional meeting or not.
So option A is the procedure for citizens, applicants, and others not physically present but appearing at a city council meeting shall allow participation by conference telephone, conference video, or other electronic means at all council meetings. And then option B, the procedure for citizens, applicants, and others not physically present appearing at a council meeting shall allow participation by conference telephone, conference video, or other electronic means only at council meetings being conducted pursuant to the Remote Meeting Statute. So, my understanding is that if, under option B, people can only zoom in if we are all zooming in.
That is correct.
Didn't we discuss another option that was, um, basically option A, but without the option of the conference video? So people could call in or email Stephanie for comments to you. But I was thinking that the video option was what gave us a technological challenge. Is that not right?
I, I think Mr. John Meehan and Mr. Lawrence could answer that question better than I.
Okay.
Send that one more time.
So I was thinking at the last meeting, um, we discussed basically option A, but without the conference video option because that was more technologically challenging at the time, um, right now. And I'm just wondering if that's no longer the case. Like, is that? That you, I, I, I think I remember that you or someone commented that, that calling in or doing what Stephanie's been doing was pretty straightforward, but it was the video piece that was more challenging.
So we did have that discussion. Clearly, without the video portion, it does simplify it. Uh, we are gaining a little staff. So, I mean, it's, it's really a decision up to the board. If you would like to allow the, the Zoom piece of it with the video and audio, uh, that is possible. It does make it a little bit more complicated, but it's not the end of the world.
And we'll still have solutions to, to conference calls in, right?
Yes.
Well, it's one of the things with the video is that, uh, what, what occurs is that it's not on our end. It could be the other individuals who don't have a bandwidth to manage that. So that's, that's where the bottom line comes in.
I would, I would, I would prefer, that's a great question. I would, I would prefer the, the substitute option A, as Jill described, where people can call in or, but not allow the, uh, video conferencing until we're comfortable that everybody that does is going to have a fair hearing before the council at night. For example, if your expectation is conferencing and you're speaking in opposition to an issue and it gets all messed up, but you felt that you were going to be comfortably given the opportunity to voice your opinion and it doesn't turn out that way, then that's not fair. I would, I would say until such time and we're, we're comfortable that we can do this, that we stay with this sort of the subset of that. We'll allow people to call in or present emails for Stephanie to read, uh, as, as we've been doing. Is that what?
That, yeah. Yes.
I think you're right. The biggest problem we have has not actually been from the city side. It's actually been from folks in town that are probably still on a VSL line. And so their audio is going in and out, or their video is going in and out. And that has been the struggle we get at, at multiple meetings since we have been, uh, meeting remotely.
So how do we know when we reach that metric? How do we know when we reach, when we reach that metric? When everyone has cable? When everyone has fiber?
Well, I, I just think if you, if you can't allow everybody the same opportunity, regardless of whether it's on our end or their end, then you're really not allowing or preparing, providing a fair discussion, it counts for me. So I would, I would feel uncomfortable allowing video conferencing for those who have the ability, but those that don't can't. And then if they try and it doesn't work, then they've lost the opportunity because they're not going to be able to get down here that night to make their, make their case either for or against an issue. I just, I just think would be remiss if we allowed it to occur when it was inevitable. I guess that's my feeling, so.
Well, I think that we ought to, um, I, I think that our goal is to hear from as many people as we possibly can and do it in the most effective way that we possibly can. So I think that when people send an email and Stephanie reads it, we get to hear that all of their words. It's not garbled or lost for technical reasons, and I think that works very well. So I would, I would support, um, option A, but with the modifications that this auditory recommended about dropping the video conference, at least at this point. I mean, I think we've all discovered that 2020 means you adapt and change all of the time. And there may be something else that comes down the pipe that we have to change this again. But I think having a, having a, a policy in place that allows the most people to be, uh, represented in our council meetings is the, is the best choice.
Best motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, that's a motion.
Now, this is on consent agenda. Do you want, do we, should we pull it out?
No, the mayor's a point of order. You should pull that out. Uh, in essence, your discussion has done that. You got a motion on that specific item, but then you'll need to go back to the consent agenda and as to whether you can adopt the rest of.
I didn't, I didn't motion to pull it out of the consent agenda.
Can we move to pull that out of the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so item B is pull out of the consent agenda. And we have a motion on the consent agenda itself if there's no further discussions. So move.
Same.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is this on the, for, on everything else?
Everything else except B. We're pulling B out.
I just.
And then we have to vote on item A? That's the one we're modifying, isn't it?
No, B is the one we're modifying.
B in the consent agenda, option A of B. Is that? Option A of B.
So we're pulling, we pulled B out. We had a motion and a second and a vote. So B's out. So now we're asking, I'm asking for a motion for consent agenda in its entirety, unless somebody has any further discussion.
With B pulled out.
With B pulled out, yes. So we have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I did just have a question about H because, forgive my ignorance, but I don't know what the Allens County Review Officer is. I, I read, I read the summary, but I, I don't know about this.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, in Orange County, a review officer responsibilities are, remain with the county staff. In Allens County, uh, the county has, uh, allowed municipal planning staff to fulfill that role. Essentially, we review all plaques, annexation, subdivision, exempt, uh, easement dedications, et cetera, per sufficiency with both our local ordinance as well as statutory requirements that are pretty consistent across all counties.
Will she do that for the entire county or just the Meven portion?
Just the Meven portions.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. Great, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the approval of consent agenda. If there's no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda item 3B, council meeting procedure, resolution, and policy adoption. What should we do there?
I move we approve with the choice of option 6A, on paragraph 6, option A, except that we remove video conference, conference video from that.
Second, we have a, we have a motion and it's a second. Any further discussion?
Just one, I think, uh, Mr. Montgomery, do you think you could research what it would take to get good bandwidth or verify bandwidth with our constituents? So we can look at that in the future.
I'm actually, I'm actually on a committee now that's looking into that.
Wonderful, thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I think, I think we should just leave it with staff that when we feel comfortable that that has been occurred or we find out that, then bring it back. I don't think anybody's opposed to as long as it be done fairly. I think it's a good idea. But I know during, even during our Zoom meetings, we had some challenging moments, hearing and understanding presenters, um, on a couple of occasions. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. For point of order, I'm going to move to, um, agenda item 5, um, and move that up. The chief, are you prepared for the facilities assessment and capital plan?
Uh, yes, yes. I think, uh, um, yes, Bill Moser's here, so we're ready for that. You'll recall in our budget, um, process that we, uh, approved a $110,000 for the facilities and assessment capital plan to do a space study. You'll recall talking about inspections and plannings, space issues, um, the police, uh, chief asking for a new police department. Looks like we may need some new fire stations in the next five to 10 years. So we did an RFQ, uh, and, uh, we did an RFQ, um, on September 14th to request qualifications or qualified firms to submit a proposal of their qualifications to do this type of study. We received four RFQs, um, from Mosley, Hery, Creach and Associates, and CPL. Out of those four, we decided to interview two of those firms. We interviewed, uh, the two firms on October 21st. And we have selected CPL to recommend to you to do this study. This study's on a, a tight timeframe. So since we selected CPL, we put together the agreement that's in your package. They, we, uh, agreed on $94,880 to do this study. And as of today, um, we have 92 days to get this study done because we want to present it to you before the budget process starts next year. So we're planning on February 17th. Uh, Bill Moser and his, uh, CPL will present a report to you on the space study. So Bill's got a few comments. We're seeking your approval of this study. Staff's recommending your approval of this study. Uh, but Bill, I wanted to include you in this process a little bit on what this study entails. So he's got about a 10 to 15 minute presentation, uh, to tell you what, uh, they're planning to do and how they're going to go about it and why it's so important.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening to you all, and thank you very much for allowing us to come here this evening and hopefully to work with you and for you and for the citizens of Meven in doing this important work. So, um.
Right.
So I gotta.
All you got to do is hit that button. I just sanitize the heck out of it.
Which button? The right button?
The right button, right there.
Okay. If anyone's technologically challenged, it's me, so you all bear with me. We have, uh, I have Jennifer Turner here this evening also with CPL. We wanted to very briefly go through some of the presentation that we presented to the staff the other week. And as David said, uh, you're on a fast track and we certainly understand that and have the resources to pull this, this, uh, study off. And I think maybe you can see how we plan to do that here this evening. Our team consists not only of in-house personnel, who are the faces across the top line there, but we also have specialty consultants regarding, uh, operations and analysis for other departments in addition to, uh, what we're going to do, provide in-house as well as specialty consultants also. One of the things that I think, one of the reasons perhaps that we were selected to work is that we do a lot of governmental services work and not just brick and mortar. We do these studies for other groups. Jennifer, uh, and a number of our staff are heavily involved in a project very similar for Buncombe County, um, in much larger facilities and staffing assessments. But we also work up and down the interstate corridor and certainly understand the, uh, aspects of, of fast growth and what happens there and what Meven is facing.
So here we're going to describe our, our process in a very quick timeframe, where we assess, analyze, and deliver the data and the material for benchmarking. Can you hear me? You can go to the next slide. So with our experience of different municipalities, we've determined different drivers. So you may see, and we won't, I won't read all of these, but, um, now telecommuting has become a driver. We've seen that we have freed up, um, space planning from different departments because of telecommuting, which allows you to free and move different departments around. We have also seen, um, the taxes and income, incoming funds, and how they affect the priorities needed and different, uh, accessories for cleanliness in this environment these days. That's a very important factor. Transient versus fixed population and also city sustainability and energy goals going forward. And also different land opportunities and different department adjacencies. So here we're showing an example on the right. We use a spatial data service called Matterport where we go through and we scan every building. And in this case, we're discussing 10 buildings. And we will take our camera, and this gives you a accurate scan of each one of your buildings. And you're allowed, you can access that via web link and then go back through and see our analyzation of different tags that we show of problem areas and growth problem areas and inefficiencies.
Well, in looking at growth, uh, in, in Meven too, uh, there are, there will be site assessments that we do, both existing sites that you are currently looking over the next 15 years, how we would adapt those, but also potentially new sites for, uh, growth for the police department. Uh, several new, uh, fire stations are, are on the list to consider as well as looking at existing sites and those that would be proposed with some of our specialty consultants.
The departmental assessment gives you a broad look into what, what your needs are. We develop a questionnaire of from 45 to 60 questions for each department to provide a thorough analysis of where their future growth is for the next five, 15, 20 years. And also any type of changes that may occur with the departments. And these are also in person or they're, we're proposing that they're virtual.
Told you I was challenged.
Don't look at that screen in the middle.
Don't look at the screen.
All right, give me one second.
Okay, it's all my fault.
Is that where you want to finish?
Next one, if you would.
Click the right one more time.
Click the right. Oh, okay. Thanks, Chris. A couple of special situations relative to the police and to the fire. We have some out of town experts, if you will, on our team that would be coming in to look not only at, at population growth as a metric of your growth, but also other metrics relating to what the police department and the fire department would be doing strategically over the next 15 years. In addition to CPL doing our in-house analysis and, and on the ground work, if you will, Rilish's administration, recreation and parks, and all the other department municipal departments.
What, is that okay if we ask questions during?
Yes, sir. You go right ahead. That's why we're here.
I've, I've worked with Recreation a number of years. He's a fine gentleman. We've fired chief in Greensburg years and worked with Department Insurance, State Fire Marshal. Well, I was kind of curious. So I, I understood the study was going to be more of a, do we have enough facilities? Do we need more space for police department? Do we need more space for inspection, et cetera? But it sounds like you're going into, to mechanisms of operation for where you need fire stations. So what's your standard, what's your standard care? I mean, if you're going to build a fire station, for example, are you, are you going to build them shooting for an ISO grade one? Are you going to shoot them for ISO grade two or three that we are now? Or what standard of care do you, same for police, we've got accredited police department. How do you, how do you pick that measurement? Because that, that plays into where you're going to, and how many fire stations?
That's a great question, and I think we will be asking those questions in our initial sessions with these consultants and with the staff and with the city. But we are looking at three, five-year incremental growth in order to get you from 18,000 to 32,000 people. Is that?
Yeah, I think that's one of the things we, we'd like to hear from the department heads as well as y'all. Some of that is, it is a decision, as you know, what ISO level you want to be. I don't think they'll spend as much time with the location as trying to figure out where growth is going to occur. And just like what we've talked about before, but I, I think it's the idea of projecting staff, staffing for those fire stations is a big part of it for us as well.
Well, I, yeah, I guess, I guess. I mean, that, that sort of puts the cart before the horse in some respect as far as projecting, for example, fire protection. I'm not as familiar with police protection, but projecting fire protection, 33,000 people's not the marker, the fire load is.
Right.
So you don't know what's fire load, but you don't know whether in, in 15 years we'll have a slew of residential apartment dwelling down on Gibson Road or whatever, Jones Road, or whether you'll have manufacturing facilities and high density workspace and warehouses. So I guess I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to tie too much up in looking at those things as far as that's planning, it has to be done in conjunction with growth as it occurs. Not so much. And I'm sure Greg, Grace is aware of that. I just, I guess this is going a little bit further than I thought the facility study was initially intended for. I thought we were looking at space we had now and was it enough? Did we need, you know, because we were asking for police space now and is there enough existing office space now? I, I'm okay with it. I just don't want to get too tied up on those, those kind of reports that come out tend to tie people down to and, and turn out to be long-term problems.
Well, based on that comment, you're going to really like something we're going to tell you here in a couple of minutes. Okay, so, so hold that thought.
So here we're showing an example of a departmental analysis where we take the building blocks of each department that exists in a building and then show you how we can grow it into another space and just taking the blocking plan and kind of do a before and after and then show you the, the growth of those. We look into adjacencies and efficiencies, especially with spatial data, and also agile workplaces because that's becoming more and more of a trend as we telecommute and go to different variations of offices. And here we're showing you the building blocks. So you may have a conference room that's a certain size that you want to keep. You may have a new office standard, which a lot of municipalities, they'll set standards for offices, whether it's director level or senior level. So here we're showing you this and then a standard office configuration.
Not only are we considering issues relative to here in Meven and looking at the next 15 years, but we also look at not only residential population, but commercial industrial population. We talk about drivers being both transient as well as, as resident folks in the community. One of the things that we've suggested and we've agreed to do, everyone thinks this is a good idea, based upon looking at the projection, the, the population growth in Fuquay Varina and Morrisville over the last 10 years. Those two communities have actually been through what you are about to go through. Now, every community is different, but we feel there, there may be some lessons learned out there relative to the police chief and fire chief and, and the public works folks that we would want to talk to and to consider that as simply a benchmark. There's also some assessment that we need to do relative to design thinking as it relates to making growth, anticipating growth within the project, the, the various building sites and now the dashboard.
And here we're showing an example of a dashboard, one that we're working on for Almonds County where it's interactive. So you have a web, essentially a web link that you're able to click to navigate. Instead of giving you a paper copy of your assessment, we're able to give you a digital version that you're able to share and use in-house and then access and share data across with the links.
And item number one right there is the important thing to remember about what we're going to be doing for you is that this dashboard and the organization of all of this material will be placed and it's, it's, it's dynamic. It's something that's not going to sit on the shelf and draw and gather dust. It's something that can be updated year to year as you all consider your, your fiscal year budgets over the next 15 years. Capital planning is certainly part of this, but it's, it's not only just brick and mortar, but it'll have to do with staff, projected compensation plans for, for that staffing and how you all would anticipate the, you build it and they will come. Notion is that you, you don't just build it and go, it goes away. The operational cost of all of these facilities are, will be important. And then starting on Wednesday, if you all approve our contract proposal here this evening, we have our kickoff meeting with the staff to, to begin the scheduling. It's a very tight study. Particularly, there's three months worth of study, but there's a couple of holidays in there the last time I checked. And so we, we really don't even have 92 days. You take away the holidays and we really need to get this done and get back to you all in February in anticipation of your, your, your budgeting process. Again, the important thing I think is that we've, we've done this before. We understand the process, but we're not going to simply give you a boilerplate. This will be definitely based on, on everything that we are, we discuss and consider in Meven. You all have a certain growth patterns there. You have a land development plan. We're going to work with the city staff and we look forward to working with you in, in making these presentations. This is a top-down study, if you will, from management figuring that out. We think that ultimately it's going to be important for you all to have engagement sessions with citizens as you begin to consider, I mean, 15 years is a long time. So there's going to be community engagement sessions for various elements that you, but you have to have a plan in order to start. And the plan's nothing more, something that you have the ability to change over time, which again, we think this dashboard approach is very important. So finally, if you start at the bottom there, we're going to listen. We're going to take all of this information and we want to go back to the top line there, get you across the finish line and to give you this 15-year snapshot. And it's only as, you know, David asked for some magical formulas. I don't know that there are any magical formulas out there. I wish there were. But we're going to, to, to get involved in this and to make this presentation and to present it to you in a way that it's a working live document that you'll be able to use over the next 15 years as you consider what to do in, in each of your fiscal years. Any other questions?
I just want to follow up on, oh, I'm sorry. Just what, what Tim was saying. I think that's the kind of direction we need to him. I think one of the things I want to look at now is fire loads in some of these other cities from a standpoint of, you know, tax-based growth, residential growth. That's some information, data we can get to see how they grew and find some similar ones to, to Meven. That was the, one of the things we really liked about CPL is they've worked in a lot of these fast-growing cities and seem to have a good feel for what, what to look at, what to do. Most of the study is centered around immediately the area we're in, this site with planning and inspections. We need some immediate direction there, but a lot of the other suggestions that are going to come out of it are, are longer term. And the other thing that they are giving us is some good estimates of what some of these things cost. You know, the CIP that I gave you this past year, it's got a lot of swag estimates in it. I'll call them where we don't even know what size police department we may be talking about. So we just, we throw a big number out there to let you know it's coming. But this will be a much better estimate, a much better, more viable, make sure what size the building might be.
Well, and there, there's brick and mortar. There are the buildings. There's the staffing, the folks you're going to put in there, the most expensive part. And there's equipment. They don't give away fire trucks. So all of those things would be considered through our consult, consultations.
Well, you all look at available spaces that might be available to us in Meven. Our, as David said, our inspection department is just described to the overflowing out there. But we look at the city, our, our sites that might be available to us around the city.
Yes, sir. That's part of what we're going to start to talk about with the staff on Wednesday morning.
Okay. And you chose Morrisville. I was a little surprised. Morrisville, I'm familiar with Morrisville. Morrisville has a huge footprint. Has a huge, huge apartment community down there. I think it's probably twice what ours is, if not more. That's just a guess.
Well, and again, the internet's a wonderful thing, but if you go out on the internet and you Google population of North Carolina cities, you can get all of these metrics and, and look at what the growth rates over the last 10 years. And Fuquay Varina and Morrisville have grown in the 70 to 80% over the last 10 years. And so you're going to be doubling in 15 years. So those two communities have had some incredible population growth. Now, they're different than Meven. I'm not suggesting that it's going to be an exact template, but I think we can probably learn some lessons from, from talking to those people and, and considering some of those questions behind the questions, if you will, how to get, how to get there.
The last thing I want to mention to you is, it's not just me and Chris involved in this. We appointed a committee that includes the police chief and the fire chief as well as our utilities director. B Hunter will be brought in at various times on that committee for the, when we have personnel discussions and projections. So we're using all the department heads and the other people in this process. It's going to be a very bottom-up process from our staffing needs standpoint. With that, staff's recommending approval of the agreement so that we can get started as possible.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think the studies of this nature are great. I've participated in 20 or 30 exactly like this. I just want to make sure that, I think we need to caution ourselves that I have gone to locations where fire departments were getting ready to lose their ratings and the city manager finally pulled out a study that was done seven years before and said they didn't need a fire station for 12 more years. And, you know, that was the definitive study to find growth. And, and I'm just talking fire stations. I can imagine the same thing in public work where the number of fire trucks are going to vary immensely, whether it's an industrial development or a residential development. So I think the studies are wonderful and, and I, I have a great deal of respect for Greg Grayson. So I know they've got a good staff. I just want to make sure that we understand that this is a picture in time and not a definitive analysis of the growth of Meven, both staff-wide or so. So I'm emotionally accept it.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Now we can go to work.
Before we get to the public hearing, we have a special presentation. I'd like for Mr. Lee Isley to step forward, please.
Good evening, City Council. I will have to apologize because our first rule was always be prepared, which I was. But I would lie and blame it on Eastern Standard Time if I thought it was not six o'clock instead of seven o'clock. Sorry.
Let's introduce your guest.
I have Mr. Bob Lewis with me. And we are here to present our 2020 Old North State Council Boy Scouts of America Aliments County Man of the Year. Had the honor of chairing the committee this year for the man of the year. It's been unusual, crazy years, we all know and experienced, but thanks to a great persistent committee, numerous community, community contributions, we have a successful Friends of Scouting campaign. The Old North State Council Boy Scouts of America are proud to honor Aliments County's Man of the Year, Mr. Glendale Stevenson. Glendale's support, leadership has contributed significantly to the vitality of not only Meven, but of all Aliments County and the surrounding communities. Glendale started his dedication to service many years ago as he earned his Eagle Scout, retiring after 43 years of service with Central Carolina Bank. As a regional senior vice president, Glendale led the community of Meven for 35 years as mayor, served on many community boards, Aliments Chamber of Commerce, Aliments Regional Medical Center Foundation, Aliments County Library, just to name a few of these. Glendale earned the Order of the Longleaf Pine, one of the most prestigious awards from the North Carolina Governor's Office. He has supported the education systems and the youth of our community for many years. After reluctantly agreeing to meet with Bob and I to discuss the committee's decision, choice for this year's award, Glendale, in his typical fashion, said we had the wrong guy. He's so humble and so quiet. He's like, you just got the wrong guy. I just don't agree with this, but we'll talk about it. There were many, many others that he thought were more deserving of this honor. Once he'd agreed, we sat down in his office out front, shared the decision with him. He agreed half-heartedly, then shared with us that he'd served as a Cupack leader as well as a scout master. On the couch in his office lay three frames in a plastic wrap. He revealed those for us, one being his Eagle Scout, his merit badge stash and his troop when he was a scout many years ago. The other two were his two sons' Eagle Scout certificates. Bob and I obviously knew we had the right choice. Bob and I obviously knew we had the right choice. After lots of service, lots of time to this community, we would be honored to present this award if Glendale and Pat would please join us up front. That's perfect. So on behalf of Alamance County District, Old North State Council, Boy Scouts of America and many, many youth. We present you with the 2020 Alamance County Man of the Year Award. The first item will be the Eagle Scout plaque and statue to place under the portrait here in the foyer at the office lobby. Secondly, a plaque commemorating this event for you to take home. My favorite of all, traditionally we do a dinner at the country club. But because of COVID, we weren't able to do that. The committee came up with the idea of awarding two scamper scholarships to Camp Cherokee for the next five years in Glendale's honor. And then lastly, we are placing an eagle brick in Glendale's name. Along with Ashley and Reed's name, your two Eagle Scout sons, in the Eagle Scout port yard at Camp Cherokee.
If you made a mistake, I'm glad it was me.
We didn't.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Scouting was a part of our family for many years. I served in the Scouts in Irwin and also as a scout master, which I was so glad to get rid of. Then my two youngest sons served as counselors up at Cherokee. And both of those, of course, obtained their scout, their eagle. They all were members of the Order of the Air, all of us were. And these are attributes that you pick up in scouting that always stick with you. I teach Sunday School once in a while. And I've said to the class several times, if you have trouble with the Ten Commandments. Let me recite the Scout laws to you. Trust was never, you have a friendly current, this kind of media, cheer for Swifty, brave, clean and record. If you just do those and you can't argue with them, you have no problem with the Ten Commandments. I thank you so much. Now, where is this eagle going?
In the lobby, on the little credenza. It'll be here forever.
That's wonderful. I was thinking, I don't have any place for that. But I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Had asked me just this past week or two. Said, what happened to the scouting business? I said, well, you know, there are too many things going on, it's history now. But I thank you at the bottom of my heart. Let me get it together, you know, I guess. On behalf of the other two eagles. I wish they could be here. Thank you.
I might need some assistance from Meven Police and the Highway Patrol. Glendale, I, Glendale, I, I would ask for forgiveness from you for my deceitfulness of getting you here tonight. And, but I am glad, I'm glad this happened and congratulations. We all picked a fantastic guy, thank you so much, you and Bob Lewis, thank y'all both, but everybody for coming tonight. And thanks so much, thank you. I told y'all it was going to be a great night in Meven. Thank y'all. Now, we'll get to, with some more great things, public hearing. Tonight, our economic incentive grant, Project Thunder. Mr. Chief, our city manager is going to be speaking on that for a moment.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Matt Williams. Matt is the, as you know, is our county's economic developer and he's having a good year so far. And I'm going to let him introduce our guests.
Thank you, and members of council, would you mind if I took the mask off because my glasses fogged up and stuff? And so I appreciate greatly your, your patience with me. I want to thank David and Chris and Lawson and Stephanie for all that they have done so far to get us to this point. It's a beautiful day in Meven, North Carolina, a great day in Meven, North Carolina. Alamance County, North Carolina. We have, we have Chick-fil-A interested in putting a facility in Meven, in Alamance County. And the incentives agreement with Meven and the county are, are, are things that need to be done. And that's why we, we have some representatives with the company that are here tonight. To participate in the hearing, to talk about the project and answer any questions. We do have Matt Lowell, who is a consultant for the company and then representing the company. We have Spencer Collins and Dave Fader. And I think Dave is going to actually present for the company. So it's a real honor and pleasure to have Chick-fil-A's interest in this community. It is a great community, Mayor, that you, that you and so many others have helped create. So in your time, we're delighted to have Chick-fil-A's interest. We look forward to the public hearing. And now I'll turn it over to Dave Fader, who's going to talk about the project and answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Good evening, City Council, thank you for allowing us to come and present to you this evening. Is it okay if I remove my mask so I could speak intelligently? Thank you for giving us a chance to talk about Project Thunder. Chick-fil-A is seeking to build a new distribution center here in the area to service restaurants. And so before I get into the project itself, in case you are somewhat familiar with Chick-fil-A, I'd love to share a little bit about our organization. And talk a little bit about who we are. And so Chick-fil-A is one of the largest privately held restaurant companies in the U.S. We currently operate over 2,600 restaurants here in over 47 states, as well as two in Canada, and we are consistently growing. We have over 200,000 team members that serve guests day in and day out. And something that we really are proud of is our local ownership. And so with Todd Perkins, who happens to operate our Chick-fil-A restaurant here in Meven. We're super proud of what he's doing in our community. If you had a chance to frequent his restaurant, I know he's doing a great job, both serving guests as well as supporting team members. What we're recognizing as our business continues to, to grow is the pressure that it puts on our distribution network. And so currently we're operating with several third party distribution companies. And they're recognizing that we're putting tremendous pressure on their business. So now we're looking to see how we can bring all of this work in-house, put a Chick-fil-A spin on it. In order to support our independent franchisees throughout the country. Something we're really proud of is our opportunity to connect with the community and to give back. And as I mentioned earlier, we have local ownership within our restaurants. Having that specific operator doing business and living in that community and working with team members throughout the community. As we're mentioning here on this slide, there's several ways in which we are able to give back. One is through our shared table program. And this is something pretty new for us and we're very encouraged by what we're doing here. Is we're able to give food to local soup kitchens, shelters, other nonprofits in order to help those in need. And that's one of our pillars of giving, and I'll mention that here in just a second. As you see, one of the other areas in which we continue to grow is providing team member scholarships. So we do this in several ways in providing scholarships to local team members that can apply. And there's a $2,500 scholarship for those team members to their school of their choice. And then we have something even more memorable, which is a $25,000 scholarship to those that are deserving and those in need. And so you see, over the course of many years, we've given $92 million in scholarships and that continues to grow. And we know that this is important as we continue to develop our local community and our local community involvement. And so as we think about our community, there's three things that we love to give to, which is homelessness, hunger and education. And we'll continue to do that even in conjunction with this project. And that's, that's part of something that we're, that is really important. So not just our restaurants, but as well as other ventures that we continue to engage ourselves in. So I'll take a step back and I'll talk to you a little bit about this project that we're certainly excited about. So our first in-house distribution center is in Cartersville, Georgia. So it's about 60 miles north of our corporate headquarters in Atlanta. And that particular facility was finished, I guess, around this time last year. And so we've been in, in operation, really about six months or so, but we realized there's significant pressure on our distribution network. And so what we're proposing here in Meven is 182,000 square foot facility. Set to construct in early 2021. And we hope to ship packages by end of Q1, early Q2 of 2022. Our plan is to support 175 restaurants and that's purely out of proximity in, in our projections here. As we describe here, it's 160 new jobs on an average wage of about $63,000 per job. And this varies between our transportation support, any warehouse staff that is required, administrative and support staff for this facility. And that's right on par with our Cartersville location. And then just brief description about our investment, we're talking about $52 million, $30 million in reference to real, real estate. So land and building construction, and then $22 million in personal property. That's all the equipment inside the structure, which excludes the trucks. So we're really just talking about trailers, in-house warehousing, equipment, things of that nature. Those trucks happen to be leased, so we're excluding that, but we know that those trucks obviously will need to operate. And so here's just a brief overview aerial of where this particular facility will, is anticipated to be located. So it's right at Park Center Drive, it's right in that cul-de-sac. And right now the site is 78.86 acres. Just for clarity, this project is rather fluid. And so we don't quite know whether we need all 78 or if we just need a portion of that. And that's in constant conversation and so we're just rapidly moving, so just out of clarity sake. And so with that, here's my contact information, just for clarity sake as well. I serve as senior director in our corporate financial services group. And this is something that we do on a regular basis. Any questions can be directed to me after this. However, I'm willing to facilitate any questions that the city council may have at the current moment.
Do you anticipate doing any production at this place or was it just distribution?
Again, that conversation is very fluid. At the current moment, it's primarily going to be warehousing and distribution. There are things in, in conversation that could change that, but at this rate, we're talking about just distribution.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're excited about it and thank you for coming. Years, Chick-fil-A was the hottest comment that we ever had. When Chick-fil-A, when Chick-fil-A come. And we, we have been certainly pleased with Todd and his, and his crew. It's done fantastic, actually, we actually had lunch with them today by coincidence. Tremendous, you know, tremendous man. And fabulous operation. So we hope you'll, we hope, we hope you will come and make this part of your home.
Thank you.
You said there were 78 acres plus or minus maybe, or minus maybe. Would that affect your 52 investment, 50 million investment?
No, it will not, yeah. So, so excuse me for not being clear at the outset. No, so our current design is for the distribution center. That 182,000 square feet, that still is the plan for investment, that 300, excuse me, $30 million of investment. So no, sir.
Timeline on the distribution center, about a year to build it, six months?
That's correct. So our anticipated plan is to start early as possible, so early 2021. And we feel like we have it down to a science where we can be ready for full operation by end of Q1, maybe early Q2 2022. Obviously, weather permitting, some other challenges that could come in our due diligence process. But our goal is to deliver first set of packages by July of 2022.
Thank you.
You bring sandwiches for everybody, I guess, does?
I'm happy to call Mr. Perkins immediately.
Any other questions?
We had a presentation not too long ago from another company that's going to be coming to our area. That will be using vehicles that have low emissions and they're trying to, they're going to be building a, a LEED certified facility. I'm just wondering, you were saying that things are so, so much fluid right now.
Yes, ma'am.
But I, I think that there's a lot of concern in our community, obviously, about our environment. And I wonder if you're willing to make any sort of agreement toward using best practices for environmentally sound building, construct, building techniques. And also the vehicles that may be coming in and out of there.
Yeah, while I can't speak specifically about, I think, what you're alluding to. I can share that Chick-fil-A does have commitment towards environmental sustainability. That is something that is paramount for us. We do have a department working on that for both of our restaurants, as well as our support center. However, I can provide response to the city council if that's a question that they have regarding specific vehicle emissions and concerns relating to that. But I don't have specific data regarding that particular issue.
Well, well, thank you for that. And, and I, I don't mean to be putting a wet blanket on this at all. We are, are very excited about this proposal. But that was the, just behind my question about production as well as distribution. Because chicken processing is a fairly heavy industrial use. And probably not something we want to have close to our schools and our interstate and all of that sort of thing. So that's why I asked about production.
Yeah, so for, for clarity sake, so Chick-fil-A does not own nor operate a chicken production facility. We still do purchase from third party vendors. And so that's not in our plans.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it is a public hearing, has anybody in the, the audience like to say anything? Comments toward our incentives in the project?
What is the incentive?
So I'll cover a few things. Dave actually covered quite a few of the items that are usually on my slides. Which, he covered everything on this slide. 52 million dollar investment, 160 jobs and a great average salary for our county. And being the accountant, I did compute what the annual payroll was for that facility. And that's a, that's a strong increase in our, growing up. Oh, okay, all right. So our Zoom has crashed, so I've got to say numbers out loud now.
Just, just my Zoom, so I can't share the video right at the moment.
Oh, okay. So as Dave mentioned, it's 160 full-time jobs at a $63,375 average salary. That's going to produce a strong annual payroll of over $10 million. Their investment in real and personal property totals 52 million. I'll go to the next slide, Chris. The incentives we're offering for this is to waive fees up to $150,000 on the project. Between the county and Meven, we're offering $780,000 in cash incentives over a five-year period. And so that totals to almost a million dollars, 930,000. over a five-year period. Uh, and so that totals to almost a million dollars, 930,000. And as you know, uh, we share those incentives with the county equally. Uh, so uh, he's already told you where it's gonna be located. It's near the Ford plant. If uh, you didn't catch that, but you can see where Ford is on that, our map. So he's just uh, west of the Ford property on that 78-plus acres. Um, and I always like to just give you all the uh, several of the highlighted highlights of the contract. Uh, our contracts are, are written with Chick-fil-A in mind, but it's also written with us in mind. Uh, and uh, it is, basically summarizes everything by paragraph. Uh, the grants never exceed a certain percentage, which that 780,000 is a one and a half percent of projected taxable value. So uh, if, if their taxable value ends up being 53 million, they're still, will get a max of um, 780,000 dollars. Uh, and it's spread over five years. Um, if their investment is less than that, we adjust the incentive downward in this, a light percentage. Uh, the, the fees are waived regardless, and uh, the county uh, shares that cost with us of the, the lost weight fee. So that, and that's generally the, the contract. Oh, so we, what, what's wrong? Oh, oh, okay. So this was uh, just, if you choose us, we are gonna welcome you in only a, a Chick-fil-A fashion.
Thank you.
Uh, we are, we're hopeful to, to be your choice, and I think you will find uh, Meben a good place to do business if you do choose us.
Thank you.
I hope this doesn't copyright infringement or anything like that. You'll forgive us.
No, no worries. No, I'm not in our marketing department, so we're good.
That is fantastic. Uh, like I said, does anybody in the audience like to, like to speak? Mr. Mayor?
I haven't had any dinner. I've had some. Why don't we go to Chick-fil-A? I was told there was gonna be a discussion about incentives, and I was asked to come and say a few words about incentives. I don't like incentives. In fact, I really dislike incentives. I wish there were no incentives. But that's not the way the game is played anymore. Incentives are part, and I always, you've been used to me speaking extemporaneously, no notes. But as I've gotten older, I found it's a lot easier if I write things down. So I'm gonna refer to my notes here. Incentives are, are a part of the business development program today, and especially for industrial recruitment. 25 years ago, industrial prospects told the city what they expected if they were to agree to come to Meben. We were desperate for jobs and taxable income. We agreed to just let anything in order to entice the county to locate in Meben. Our tax base was extremely low. An example, A.O. Smith said they would not come to Meben if we were planning to annex that plant. If you recall, when Universal Textured Yarn came, the agreement was to leave them out for X number of years. When A.O. Smith came, they said, oh, and incidentally, at that time, everything was outside the city limits. We had, the only industrial park we had was the Orange Industrial Park. So A.O. Smith was outside. They said, we're not coming if you go and annexes. So at their demands, we agreed not to annex for 20 years, and we lived up to that agreement. So we had A.O. Smith, later GKN, the Orange Industrial Park, and General Electric outside of our city limits, paying no city taxes, and getting city water and sewer services, and other services that the city provided, such as, if they had a problem, they needed our police or fire, we provided it. These were not good agreements for the city or the people here. In the early 90s, we were not successful in our efforts to bring Mercedes to Meben. But we learned a great deal during the course of those conversations. As a result, the city council and the administration adopted a policy. If you get our city services, we annex. One of the finest things the council ever did. No more conversation about it. If you wanna come to Meben, you get our services, you're gonna help pay the capital expenses of the city. But you know, the matter of incentives didn't go away. With the guidance of our attorney, Charles Bateman, who told us many times, he was a best city attorney in the state, and with the wisdom of the city administration and the council at that time, a practice, we can call it a policy, I think it was a practice we adopted, that provided for incentives much larger than we had ever imagined. We'd been used to talking a few thousand dollars. Suddenly, we were talking millions. But in effect, the, these were going to be paid by the industrial prospect themselves. Just had to figure it out. The policy provided that the city would generally provide financial assistance for the prospect over a three- to five-year period. And it would not begin to be paid until after completion of the plant and the first year's tax payment. In effect, it was a rebate of sorts. That policy has served the city well. And the result has been Walmart, Lidl, Crescent, Moana Aga, and also GKN, the Orange Industrial Park. And I'm talking about things that were outside all this time. GKN, the Orange Industrial Park, the former GE plant, now owned and operated by EDB, and now United Parcel, and the prospect Chick-fil-A that you're currently considering. Not only has the tax base of Meben grown some hundreds, from some hundreds of millions of dollars to well over $2 billion, the city enjoys the ability to bar as needed with a credit rating of double A plus. I don't know of another city in North Carolina our size that has a double A plus credit rating. As a result of this modern incentive program, every property, oh, and I've heard it said many times, that you're picking favorites. We came to Meben, we got no incentive. Why are you using our tax dollars and giving them away? So I'm gonna speak to that. As a result of this modern incentive program, every property owner in Meben, homeowners, retail merchants, and industrial plants enjoy a relatively low tax rate that has remained low for years. I think the only adjustment we've had in the tax rate, a few years ago, we got aggressive and cut it like a nickel. And then we, what, we did this work here and other things that we jacked it up another penny or two. And that's not to mention the improvements that we see here in our city over the years. Renovated city hall, a beautiful library and new fire stations, the Arts and Community Center, and our newest athletic fields. While I said, I don't like incentives, and I don't, but I support them if they are used correctly. So I hope I have provided a few thoughts as to the value of business development incentives carefully structured and developed for the benefit of the city, our business clients, and most of all, our people. We don't need, there's no client in this country so important that we want them if they don't benefit the city. We're here. We've been here a long time. We're the folks who make Meben what it is. And if it doesn't benefit everybody in town, then let them go down the street. We don't need them. But the experience has been, through your wisdom and the policy you've adopted, it's been put together in such a way that it's been good for everybody. We all, as a homeowner, I benefit from the low tax rate that we enjoy here. Everyone benefits when business is, is conducted for the benefit of everyone. So I want to thank you for keeping Meben physically strong and for allowing me to have this moment to speak with you. So along with 16,000 other Mebenites, I wish you well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is anybody else in the public would like to make a comment? If not, I move to close the topic. It's, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, what's the closure of the capsule?
I move for approval of the performance agreement based upon the findings that the company would annex. They had, and they had 52 million to the tax base, created 160 jobs and generally benefits citizens. Meben is a merit Stevenson, so adequate we explained.
Second. Well, we have a move and a second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Sorry. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Welcome to Meben.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Back to you guys. Dave, appreciate it.
I have no words. Thank you. We're, we're looking forward to uh, with that, the county's, the county uh, meeting is November 16th and some other things. So uh, once all of that's behind us, then they'll make their decision and their announcement at some point. This is a nice first step. We appreciate this so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate your patience. David, you were waiting and waiting, waiting to be that. You were waiting for the opportunity to be that.
David, I love that. I love that. It was like, oh, yeah. All right.
Can we take just a brief little moment break and let me get started back up? Cause they're gonna have a presentation.
All right, let's take the five-minute break. Five-minute break. Matt behind it, the size behind it. Really.
Capacity which we would reach by 2030 at our current project. The facility will allow us to have our own athletic facilities, which would be a great blessing. Let me interject here. I've been the athletic director up until this year and the folks at the rep department, Amy and Chris and Dean and Matt and Aaron has just been fantastic to work with and a great blessing to us. So we're very thankful for them. But we would love to have our own facilities. It will also allow us to expand our art, music and science programs with larger labs and class spaces. The students at Bradford hear a lot about truth, beauty and goodness. Our desire is to create a beautiful facility inside and out that will facilitate learning all about truth and goodness. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tony. Okay, now that we all know why we're here and what we're working towards, we'll jump into the test. The first thing you're going to be asked to evaluate is whether or not the proposed design will materially endanger the public health and safety. So for this item, I'm going to ask you to recall your staff report that you reviewed before your meeting tonight, that you just heard Mr. Sober briefly go over. And you know, let's think about the fact that that is your competent and capable staff doing their job and making sure that your ordinance, which is written for this exact purpose, is being carried out to make sure that we've met all the standards of that document. So that staff can sign off and recommend approval of a project that indeed is going to be the benefit and not a harm to the to the public health and safety of your community. To quickly go through that, don't want to belabor it too much, but we did, of course, go through your thorough technical review committee process. And I'd like to ask Alan Hill, our civil engineer, to talk to you about that process.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Alan Hill. The principal civil engineer with Triad Design Group out of Greensboro. I am also the design lead, the civil design lead for this project. Done multiple projects here in the city of Meven, primarily out at the North Carolina Industrial Center. I think I'm had a part in almost all but maybe two of the sites out there at North Carolina Industrial Center. And just thoroughly enjoy working with the with the staff here. I've been been working with them for many years. I do want to point out that the plan that we have in in front of you tonight has been through months of design effort and also through three iterations of the technical review process. We during that process, we received a lot of good comments, a lot of good feedback. And I feel like that we have certainly addressed those comments. And we have basically put together a a plan that we we feel like adequate adequately addresses the comments. And working with staff, we're bringing forward the a well thought out plan. I would like to just touch on a couple of the elements of the plan itself. Chris, if you could go back, I think to, there you go. Thank you. The the site plan. The the site itself, they're going to be, we're proposing three primary buildings for the various grade levels. The entrance, the main entrance to the site will be off of the main drive into the subdivision. So we're not proposing an access, the main access off of NC 119. There is a drive out to NC 119, but it will be exit only. Right and left turn exit only at that point. The main access drive provides access to the parking. We we have an adequate number of parking spaces. We are proposing 92 parking spaces for staff and students. That is, that is more than the minimum required by the ordinance. However, it does not exceed the maximum allowed. The main access also, main drive also provides access to the stacking for student drop off. That is the the drive that you see. If you're facing the plan, it's the drive that you see going around to the right. That is a a two lane or double drive. And the the length and the stacking that we provided there exceeds what the the traffic, traffic impact statement required. So we have more than enough stacking. And we also exceed the amount of drop off, student drop off area. The other, one other item that was actually brought up by staff, by engineering and by planning was the pedestrian access. We are showing or providing a pedestrian access from the right of way of the main drive coming into the subdivision. That follows along to the right of the of the student drop off drive. So we we have a sidewalk coming in and it provides access without having to pass through the parking lot and not then cross over any of the, any of the driveways. Chris, if you would go to yes, there you go. Reading my mind. Water and sewer on site, we we are proposing an onsite septic system. And we have already been through the process with the county. And we've obtained our improvement permit from the county for the septic system. And water will be provided by Orange Almond's Water System. We also have a letter there to the, let's see, back up one more if you will, Chris. The letter to the right there is from Orange Almond's Water System stating that they will will provide water for the site, both domestic and for fire protection. And then the the next slide was just a letter from from Franz Hall, city engineer. Just acknowledging that we we do have adequate coverage for septic and water. Thank you.
Okay, as you heard from Mr. Sober, we do have one waiver request. You know, I mentioned before, we've met all the requirements of your ordinance, but we are asking for one waiver in doing so regarding a building material. So I'd like to ask John Plagman, our architect, to come explain that material and why we think it's reasonable and appropriate here. And would ask for your consideration on that waiver.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm John Plagman. I'm a licensed architect in Burlington, North Carolina. Been practicing here for 12 years and been a licensed architect for over 20. I am the architect for the school and designing the project. I said, you'll go to slide 12 real quick. I think it has the elevations on it. Thank you. In designing the main elevations of the project, we have two school buildings, one for elementary, one for the high school. And in the middle is that gym building, which is on the top. It's got gym, administrative offices, library, a wrestling room, weight room, and all kinds of theater kind of functions. So it's a large building to accommodate a lot of need. To best do that span, we're proposing a structural system that is open. And typically, the kind of skins that you see on those kinds of buildings are the metal skins that are prohibited in your U D O. In the past projects that we've successfully done in Meven, we've used an insulated metal panel, which I believe is in your packets. It's the full, the full product brochure. Insulated metal panels are a much superior product to what is typically known as a metal skin building, which is more warehouse and less permanent looking. They offer a very superior insulation factor, which usually achieves the energy factor for the building just in the skin itself. It's much thicker metal. It's it's made of a better grade steel. And it's made more to look more like a stucco product or something like that, other than a root metal product. It's the same product that was approved for signature flooring. It's the exact same panel that we're use that we did for signature flooring that we're proposing for this as well. And so we hope that you will consider metal. It's just on the second floor of the main, main gym building. Everywhere else is brick 100%. So we've got masonry everywhere except for the entire structure. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Have you been able to show us what that, what those panels look like? This picture makes me think of just a typical metal building.
So do you have the ability to pull up the packet that's here? It's yeah, so can I point?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, I don't know how to use the thing. All right, if you'll point to the upper right, that is exactly the kind of metal panel that we're proposing using. It's it's a very low profile rib. It's got a textured finish to it, kind of like a stucco wood. But E F S doesn't work on this kind of structure because of the way the building moves. E F S would just crack all the pieces and it would not be a good performing product. So we found that this is a great alternative to it.
In that color?
Well, colors are still, yeah, I mean, we can certainly talk colors, but it's probably going to be a neutral color. To kind of play homage to the the residential neighborhood that's around. I certainly don't want to do something loud and obnoxious to compete against the neighborhoods and stuff. So we're, our our goal with the designs of the elevations is to fit in with the residential scale. That's why we did three instead of one giant structure and nothing, a giant building, so.
And it's only the second floor?
Yes, sir.
Of the gym?
Of the gym. It's brick everywhere else on all the skins.
Did we provide a side? Did we provide a waiver for signature?
I believe we did.
Four, I don't recall that.
Yes, sir. The architecture was provided with that as part of the elevations and the metal skin was identified.
We had a warrant of adjustment for signature floor?
No, sir. That was part of their, they had a special use request for a planned multiple occupancy group, which was just a council special use hearing.
Okay. We, of course, can't have a well-rounded discussion about the public welfare and safety without talking about our traffic study and how that. I know you've heard about it before, but I do want to just briefly go over tonight what was done, who who approved it and and what we found from that study. So I'll ask Dion Brown from Davenport Engineering to address that, please.
Good evening. My name is Dion Brown. I work with Davenport Engineering based out of Winston-Salem. I am a registered professional engineer with the state of North Carolina. We did the study back in October of last year. And it was reviewed by N C D O T district office as well as municipal school transportation assistance department within N C D O T that reviews all school reports as well as your city's consultant, R M K. Through the study, it was shown that there were some recommended improvements at different intersections. However, with it being a school, they go underneath different requirements as far as what will get built because the school gets reimbursed by N C D O T now. So with the school, with the subdivision coming in, they are providing the turn lanes into the site on N C 119. So those provide the safety on N C 119. As far as on the school property, as the civil stated, we did recommend double stacking on campus to accommodate all the parent carpool as well as where short staff or short term visiting. And where crosswalks and things like that should be on campus as well as having the second access onto N C 119 for exit only. As mentioned, it was approved and reviewed by N C D O T. And if you have any questions, please.
I can't tell about drawing other turn lanes on on like train into the main the main entrance.
They're not on this runway. Yes, they will be turning going into the roundabout from the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
And do you anticipate the subdivision being done in in before the school?
I believe the subdivision is going in before the school.
Yes, sir. The the timing is such that the first phase of that subdivision that will have to build the turn lanes and the roundabout will be before the school. Okay, with that, we'll move to the second prong of your test, which asks you whether or not the proposed design will substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties. So for that, I'm going to ask our licensed appraiser, Mr. Tom Taylor, to speak to that component.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Tom Taylor. I'm a real estate appraiser from Greensboro. I've been in the appraisal business for 45 years and I'm a licensed appraiser by the state of North Carolina, a certified general. I also hold the M A I and the S R A designations from the Appraisal Institute. So I was asked to study the proposed Bradford Academy and render an opinion as to whether or not it could substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. And so I have done a study and my conclusion is that it will not. I have to say, I I based some of my research on studies that I did a little over four years ago for the city of Meven for your new community park on Center Street. Now, of course, we have athletic fields out there without the lighting. And so the concern was that that might hurt property values of adjoining properties. So I did a study of neighborhoods that surround schools and especially with athletic fields. And I can't find any evidence at all that those harm values. I studied homes that adjoined the school and athletic field properties and compared those sales to similar houses within the interior of subdivisions and find no difference at all. So my conclusion is that Bradford Academy will not injure the value of any surrounding property values. Thank you.
Thank you.
That will move to your third prong of your test. Here we'll be looking at whether or not the proposed design is in harmony with the area in which it's located. So for this, I wanted to look at the zoning map that Mr. Sober provided in his report to you. Of course, where the subject property is outlined in green there, you see it's R 20, as you've heard. But most notably is that it's R 20 to the south that continues. But then you've got, of course, the industrial properties and that commercial zoning even to the to the northeast, I guess it is. So what happens is that this property serves as a transitional use. So you get a nice step down from those more intense non-residential uses, the industrial uses, the B two use. And then it steps down to what is is clearly going to be and about to be residential. We do have some, you know, sporadic residential use in this area already, but you don't see a lot of, you know, you don't look at this and see a lot of subdivisions. But we we know that one's coming and and, you know, that subdivision is in fact very excited about this school. So I think this is going to be a nice transition to to step down and and provide that harmony of uses that you look for. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is the aerial red star, of course, is the subject property. And you see the subdivisions or the neighborhoods that you do see are are some manufactured home neighborhoods. And then you see those bigger industrial uses is the main thing that you would notice here. So this school use will be a nice step down. Creating that harmony of of the entire area. Mr. Plagman touched on this earlier, but I'd like to ask him to come again and speak to this part of the test as to how he took into account the the area in designing the his building to be compatible with what he knew was residential in your in your land use plan and 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 residential neighbors predominantly. So I'll ask him to do that now.
You're you're in close vicinity to the rest home outside.
We are.
What, quarter of a mile?
I believe it's one property over, is that right?
Okay.
Yeah, so again, that's a great point. I'm glad you brought that up. Another institutional use in the area that has a residential component to it. So this is a nice, I think, harmonious use to segue that as well.
Well, I think Amanda did a great job of summing that up. In approaching the design of the school, we were asked by the school to look at it from a few different aspects. One was, how do we put everything in one building? We quickly realized that being in the location that they decided on, they landed on, that that's probably not the best move for a lot of different reasons. One is we had to accommodate a septic field at the time. We didn't know what the size was or anything. We needed a soccer field. We needed other uses. And then Dion, as you said, we had a lot of circulation we had to factor in. It was pretty quickly realized that a a multiple building approach was probably the best move. It gives the school the ability to be flexible in how they house the different classrooms while at the same time making that transitional step down from the large industrial to the residential, so it's not such an abrupt change down 119. And so, I mean, those are the main reasons why we did that. Also, as you notice, on just these front facades, we have stepped the facades back as you as you approach the buildings with different wings. We've got some wings on the side. I wish we had a side elevation. I tell them, Chris, if you have that or not. A side elevation.
Side elevation.
I think it's in there. I thought I looked for it in there. But we approached the buildings from the side, the back and the front as a stepped in approach and and capped them off with a gable roofs instead of flat roofs. That kind of pay homage to the residential that's going to be there.
What is the roofing material?
So the roofing material is a galalume metal roof. And it'll be shingles on the two sides, on the two brick buildings which are on the sides would be asphalt shingle. And then the bigger roof will be a galalume metal roof, and that's an insulated metal roof as well. So not like a screw down roof you see. It's it's more enhanced metal again.
How large are these buildings, the the two?
So the two flanking buildings are two-story. I think they're about seven to 10. It's been a while since I've looked at the plans. Seven to 10,000 square feet for each floor. And then the bigger building is, it's got a gym in the middle and flanking classrooms, so probably 20. Again, I apologize for that. I just, it's been a while since I've looked at the plans.
If it would be helpful, we can go back to the site plan slide that would give you that bird's eye view of how those three buildings interact. If anybody would like to do that, or so I believe that's slide number three. On my, yeah. So you can see in the middle, the larger, the larger footprint is the gymnasium admin building. And then the two wing buildings, as as Mr. Plagman referred to them, are actually completely separated. So you get a nice breakup of of structure. You don't have this big massive building with a lot of expansive facades. So you get a nice breakup again. And I would also point out that the building closest to 119, which is one of those classroom wings, is is fully bricked. So the the building that you see most easily from the roadway is a is a brick facade. You won't see the the metal product we talked about is is on the middle building. And of course, it's step backed. You can kind of see what Mr. Plagman was saying with the way that's not just a a even rectangle. You know, you've you've got the the front feature and then it gets a little bigger and wider. And then it gets the biggest and widest in the back where the gymnasium opens out. Which, you know, I think if we all envision schools that you probably went to and are all around, that's that's a pretty standard feature where you where you have a gym. Either it's totally separate or it's back in the back of the building, kind of masked by by the rest of that building. So that's what's, that's what the design idea is here. There's no questions about that. I'll go to the the last test. And if you could go to our slide 14, please. This test asks whether or not the proposed design will be in conformity with the land development plan, the thoroughfare plan and other plans officially adopted by city council. So for this, of course, we'll we'll look at Meven by Design, your very thorough, comprehensive plan that encompasses all those things. I believe Si mentioned a G four secondary growth, but I did just confer with them and we are G two primary residential, so we'll make sure of it.
Yes, that that is correct. I spoke before. This is a G, this is in the G two primary growth area for that you see before you in the yellow, largely residential in nature.
Thank you. So largely residential, of course, but this is a school, but as you know, it is allowed in your R 20 district. And that's, that's on purpose because, of course, a school is a very classic supporting use in your residential zones. You don't want somebody to have to, you know, drive, drive a great distance or go through a bunch of other parts of town or activity centers or long corridors to be able to get to school. That's something you want in in the communities spread out, nice and easily accessible from all parts of town. So so that's why you have have your ordinance and in your land use set up this way that we're able to to be a part of with this request in your G two area. We also meet, as your senior staff report, we meet some some more specific isolated goals in this plan, such as your public facilities and infrastructure goals of walkable connectivity. As you've heard, we do have interior connection with sidewalks between the subdivision to the south and and the school. I believe you also have a safe routes to school goal and objection, an objection, objective, excuse me, in your Meven by Design plan, which this speaks directly to, so that folks can have a safe crosswalk, a place for a crossing guard to to set up and have those walkable routes that are safe to school. Of course, this also is an illustration of your village concept goal in your plan. That's that's the mixing of these. So you don't just have one single use here, one single use here, one single use here. You put uses that make sense together. So people can have a community, have their little bubble that they stay in to do the things you do on an everyday basis, of course, school being one of those things. So I think this works well for that. And then, of course, you know, your your Meven by Design plan talks about controlling your your perimeters and then your, the outer edges of your city limits. So this, this is a plan that, you know, has been reviewed with your staff in in accordance with your E T J development regulations. So that you have a nice, well-planned, intentional, attractive site that's outside your city limits, but planned as if it was in your city limits. So with that, I will go on to my conclusion unless there's any specific questions about that. So to summarize, I'll quickly run through the test here and and our evidence that you've heard tonight. The proposed design will not materially endanger the public health or safety of the city of Meven. This prong of the test is best evidenced by your staff report. You've heard in that report that this proposal has been thoroughly vetted by your T R C review committee and all those component departments in the city. And that review has yielded a determination that this proposal does meet your ordinance requirements. There is, of course, the one waiver that we believe we've presented ample evidence tonight is reasonable and appropriate under your ordinance. And of course, the the entire package, including that waiver, is is being recommended to you for approval from your staff. Next, the proposed design will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. We've heard tonight from a professional licensed appraiser who did a thorough study looking at that and his his study provided, provided a a clear determination that that will not be the case. Your third test asks you whether or not the proposed design will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. This one will, due to its status as a prime transitional use between your non-commercial uses to the north and the east. It provides a nice transition and step down to the residential uses to the south and the east. It's also been designed, both in its site layout and architecturally, to be compatible and harmonious with the area. Lastly, the proposed design will be in conformity with the land development plan, thoroughfare plans or other plans officially adopted by the city of Meven. In that it is conforming with the G two primary residential growth area and achieves the other objectives and goals that we've talked about from the Meven by Design plan. I will open it up for questions. And if we have time, I know you've been here a little while tonight. We do have a video that that the school put together as part of this campaign to to be able to offer this great campus to their students. So if we've got time, we can click on that and watch it. if we've got time, we can click on that and watch it. I think it's about two minutes long.
Yeah, sure.
Sure. Thank you. If you'll click on that link, please.
They're with me if it crashes.
It's going to open in outside browser, if that's okay.
It's working. Just give it a minute.
Are there any questions while we're waiting on that? We'll use our time efficiently here.
Any questions on council?
No, I just had a question. If if we were to move forward with this approval with respect to the waiver that's being requested, is is the material as presented the only material that could be used? Or is there, does it open up the opportunity for them to use any type of metal on that building?
Ms. Arctory, if your motion includes this specific material, that is a condition that you can place on this approval.
Okay, thank you.
And we would be amenable to that type of restriction to to use what we've laid out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Want me to try the video? It's it has a lot of good.
Shall we close the public hearing while we're waiting?
You need to, Mayor, ask if there's any votes from the public.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do. It is a public hearing. Anybody in the public would like to, the audience would like to speak. We're going to wait for the video.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and second to close. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our public hearing is closed.
I move that the request is both reasonable and in the public interest because it finds that it A, will not materially endanger the public health or safety, B, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, C will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, and D will be consistent with the objectives and goals in the city's adopted plans, including a comprehensive land development plan, Meven by Design. Specifically, the request meets the goals and objectives of the G2 primary residential growth area. And that's my motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Does that include the waiver and the specific restriction to the type of metal presented?
Yes, it does.
And does it include the approval of the special use request?
I didn't say the whole thing, though I should. I'm sorry. I move to approve the special use request for the elementary secondary school as presented with the waiver and conditions provided during the conversation, because it meets all of the findings of fact.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So I move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we?
I think it's ready to go.
I'm not sure if it'll be sound.
That's my next door neighbor.
Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Appreciate it. That's fair. I would like to suggest that we agenda sometime future discussion on this metal.
Okay.
Metal material on 6.1. I mean, it's a fairness issue to me, and I know a number of people that wanted to use metal that were not allowed to, and this one came to us in a very front open manner, but I didn't know signature have metal in it. I mean, I might have been paying attention. I usually do. If we're going to if we're going to waive it that easily, despite a meeting like this, we really ought to address it. Put some specifications here, something where people know they can use it.
Be happy to. So I just need some direction. And certainly, from talking with Mr. Plagman, the technology with some of these precast metals has come a long way since our ordinance was adopted in 2008. So if I just need some direction on, I guess, how deep you want us to dive to do research to come back to you with.
I think I think they just need to be discussed. The, I mean, apparently staff saw something in signature pouring design that it came through without a special use permit or a special exception by the council, at least that I would aware of. But does anybody else remember it coming up? I don't. So apparently, there was something that there's there was a decision criteria somewhere there that we need to formulate into some kind of ordinance so that everybody has the same opportunity.
Sorry, my. This is a word. I'd like some education on that moving forward, different technologies that are being used versus 2008 versus today.
Sure.
And delineations. Thank you.
Si, you might also be present out there as a product organization. You can go out there and decide. They're doing things now with metal that you couldn't do before. And so you may be seeing that since you've been ahead, you're the head of the current one now, so.
Absolutely.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Si, you might want to stay down there. We, the VPAC ordinance amendment.
Yes, sir. I just have one slide for you. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission has asked me to present on their behalf. And Ms. Phillips can perhaps speak to this in further detail about a proposed ordinance amendment to remove the council delegate from the VPAC to acknowledging that there are no other advisory bodies that have a council delegate on with the city and replace it with an at-large position. So this would be a position that's at large within the city and the ETJ limits. And the what you have before you is the amended text that is being presented for consideration tonight.
Thank you, Si. This came up at a bike and pen meeting probably two months ago. And I'm I'm loving on the bike and pen committee, and it's been a wonderful experience over the last three years, and I'd like to continue to be involved, but perhaps more as a liaison instead as a voting member. And if the council person steps off as a voting member, that would free up another position for somebody in the community. And I think that we consider all of these advisory commissions to be advisories. They they should be open to as many people in our community as possible. So as we expand, we have two other things we're going to talk about tonight about advisory committees from the from the citizenry. And I'd just like to see some consistency throughout those where council people all are readily available to talk to anybody who wants to talk to any of us or consult or give opinions. But perhaps being a voting member on one of these committees is not the most appropriate thing. So that's the thinking there.
This is public hearing.
I don't.
I support this. I support this 100%. I make a motion that we approve the amendment.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just say I agree, and I think that it is important as we talk about other committees that we have that consistency. So let's make sure we do that.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So I move. Aaron, the Recreation and Parks Embassy Commission Restructure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thanks for having me. It's glad I'm glad to be back, as I'm sure most all of you are here at city council. I just want to talk quickly, hopefully, about some changes. I realized when I started almost two years ago that all the members of the Advisory Committee for Recreation and Parks had their terms had expired, and so I looked at that as an opportunity for change. I did some thinking and some looking, and our National Recreation and Parks Association was putting out a campaign about champions of parks. And I thought long and hard about what champions meant. And so I have my slide here talking about advocacy over advisory and and how I have this term for the new commission. And to me, advocacy is is the biggest part of this group. For someone to want to volunteer, somebody who may want to go out to the parks and share the information about what Recreation and Parks is doing and really be a champion for what's happening around the city. I know that I can't be everywhere at once and can't be at the parks every single day or or out at all of them. And we we need help to share our message and and what we're doing. And so I'm proposing to you some changes which you've seen in your packet. Thanks to Mr. Brown for all of his help going back and forth with the changes, with the ordinances and everything. But but I I have before you the proposal, and I'd like to move forward. There is one small little caveat on the list. I believe it lists that we would typically take applications through October 31st. This year, we would have to move that up to the end of November so that we could hopefully present all of you with some applicants at the next council meeting so that we could be ready for our first advocacy commission meeting in January. Any questions?
Okay, we see what you're looking for out there. Just folks there that you do park?
Yeah, I mean, really, that that's part of what we'll talk about at the meetings. Just sharing what programs do we have going on, what parks, changes are happening. You know, today's a great example. We had to close down the dog park because we we thought the shade structures that are going there were coming last Monday, and they came this Monday. So we had to close that down, you know. I I'd love for those members to be able to share that message, and we can we can send it out and say, hey, if anybody asks you, here's what's going on. You know, talk about our programs, talk, be at the events, just be an advocate for what what we're doing at Recreation and Parks.
Well, if we made the changes on the bike, we need to make the changes on the the rec board where a city council member is not on the the committee.
Yeah, I agree with that. Act as a liaison, but not be one of the voting members of the.
Yes.
Who's present on there, Mr. Mayor?
Nobody that I that I'm aware of.
Yeah, and so that's that's if if this is approved and you would like to appoint someone, I don't know how soon that can happen, but I'm looking forward to working with whoever that may be.
We talk about.
I think the idea is that we don't want anyone from council to serve on this.
Even as a as a, so there wouldn't be somebody who would anybody could come to the meeting and stand and just not be vote. Wonderful.
You might have.
All of you, you can all come. That would be great.
That's the same with the with the bike competitive. Even though Patty has stepped down as far as a member, she continues to attend. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that.
Okay, so we can make we can make those adjustments as needed.
Okay.
Well, I think you've been doing a wonderful job of advocacy by yourself, and I saw your Where's Aaron, Where's Waldo campaign, and it looked like you did every one of the parks over the last week or so. So I think that the enthusiasm that's happening within our Parks and Rec department now is really wonderful and spreading it to other folks who can help you with that mission. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Do we need to?
We need a motion.
Do we need to iron out the terms of the membership, or is that something that you want to bring back to us?
I think as long as, as far as removing the council member, and I think as long as you state that in your motion.
That would be sufficient. And then you got to retain language. So I think you should be fine.
So we'd have seven members.
Correct.
None of which are, as you said, a council person. Okay.
So this this shows, the math doesn't quite add up. So it says that it should be composed of five members, but then there I I count seven as outlined here. So you take one away, that would, you take away the council member, and that was six.
Six members at large.
Actually, it says five in one paragraph. It's always.
Take away the council member, there would be six at large. Is that what we're proposing?
Well, it says five and then one from a local school system.
That's.
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct. Five and then one from the local school system, and then the seventh would be.
Another at large.
Now it would be correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's just section 24 dash 32 needs to be amended in paragraph three.
Correct.
From five to six.
I make a motion to adopt the Restructured Recreation and Parks Advocacy Board as written below with the exception of section 24 dash 32, where there shall be one member appointed from personal from the personal of a local school system, and six members shall be chosen at large. The section A1 shall be stripped from the membership.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So I move. Thank you, Aaron.
I'm back there to give y'all a little feature of some of the things he's been doing, and also to show you, I sent, I think I notified you of some work he's been doing on Christmas, kind of planned for Christmas, and show you some of the decorations we're looking at adding this year.
So this past Saturday, we had our COVID safe drive-through trick-or-treat and costume contest. It was a lot of fun. It was a little bit crazy at the beginning. But we estimate about 600 kids that came through. And 300 of those pre-registered, which is really, really cool. They got on the recreation software and signed up and gave us what costumes their kids were going to wear so that we could match them up. So that was really neat. It was a six-hour event. I think some of the other leaders in the rec department may have liked it to be a little. So that was really neat. It was a six-hour event. I think some of the other leaders in the rec department may have liked it to be a little bit shorter. But I think it was a good timeframe and while it was busy at the beginning, it kind of slowed down towards the end and it was great. So we're going to be naming some contest winners, which will be completely drawn from random and those will come out on Wednesday. And then we will also be sharing some of the photos that you'll see tonight, which we thought were really spectacular. So we had some awesome costumes and just wanted to share some of those with you. Thanks. Thank you to those of you who stopped by.
They're great photographs.
Yeah, and I mean, I quite honestly, I don't know what trick-or-treating was like Halloween night, but we were we were hopeful that this was a safe way for for the kids. So and then I'll share with you some new Christmas decorations that we've purchased that should be going up soon. I know that the Dear Family Photo Opportunity Organization there, they have arrived and will be going up this week or next week. Our Santa mailboxes are up. There's one here at City Hall. Also, the little tiny one is at the MAC and then you have the large one at the community park. So we're going to be doing a program with letters for Santa that we'll be helping with delivering those to Santa and making sure that Santa writes back.
I was gonna say you are gonna respond to all of them.
Santa will be responding. Yes, sir.
That's really, I never got over the fact that I sent one to Santa and didn't get an answer back. I'm still scarred.
Please, please feel free to put your letter in there.
Hopefully this mail will be better than the. There was a question in email about whether we would respond. I think even, I'll be glad to help, but we need to respond to it.
Yeah, we've since that email, we've had an internal discussion that we're definitely going to do that.
We've got to be careful that the signatures, the writing is identical somehow, so they may compare.
It's pretty unbelievable.
Get a stamp.
Yeah, yeah. But some more poll decorations. And so the large ornament, which will go close here to City Hall, will have the logo on it. And then the stack of four will go at the roundabout at the community park. Jolly St. Nick will be waving to everybody across the street from the Fifth Street Pocket Park. It'll be pretty neat. And then a couple other, this light bulb photo opportunity, we hope to put right outside here on the lawn between the road and the parking lot. And then David's favorite, the North Pole Snowman Maker that will be at the, I think we put, I have First Street on there. I think we might have that at Fifth Street instead due to, I think, power, but we'll find a good place for it anyway. But anyway, we know that, you know, we weren't able to have the Fourth of July and fireworks and such. And we wanted to provide some new and exciting features for the holidays for the for the community.
Aaron, how long have you been working on this?
Not too terribly long.
This is fantastic.
Well, thank you. Thank Mr. Cheek. He was he was the spearhead.
Well, this is his, but he loves picking out Christmas stuff, I know.
I had to stop him. I thought my entire budget was going to go to Christmas decorations.
You can pay for a band this year that I wanted, but that's still a whole different story. I'm scarred for that, by the way. Beach band. This is a this is a great council action, great staff. Very proud of you. Very proud.
There'll be Instagram, Facebook campaign, news.
I mean, I think I think a lot of it is like the light bulb. When we sat down, Cindy Bagby was another big part of this. We sat down and I said, like, we need to have things that will bring people to Meven. So how can we get them to come here and then take a picture and then go have dinner and then spend time in our parks? And so we hope that, you know, these photo ops, we'll get them out there on social media and try to get more people to Meven.
Get that big tree decorated again this year beside.
I don't know much about this tree. It's weird.
Gatlinburg, I don't know if anybody ever goes up to Gatlinburg here in December, but I mean, people just go there to see the the lights in those three towns. I said something to you about it last year. It'd be nice if we could, people would say, let's go to Meven and see their lights. It's a good start.
I think that I think this is a start to a plan where we'll continually add more more pieces and place them through town and give people the opportunity to drive through and see the entire the entire city.
Thank you, Aaron.
Very nice.
Very good. Thank you, Si.
Aaron, I don't know if you're on the label, but in case you are, I want to tell everybody about something. Months or so ago, out at the art center, they were hanging out masks, people that drove through and got them. Out at Mill Creek on Sunday, somebody's out there laying out the golf course for kids to play and the kids golf program, doing a heck of a job. This past Saturday, I rode through the trick-or-treat thing out there and one thing was constant in all these things that I mentioned, and that was Aaron and his enthusiasm. I swear to God, I think they got a good one, David.
I was making a presentation, Impact Aliments, today and Aaron was almost telling me. I introduced him as the best Parks and Recreation Director in America.
Good call. Aaron, remember that when review comes up. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We have been doing a lot of internal discussion. I have had a lot of one-on-one conversations with most of you about this racial equity committee. The more we've looked at it from a staff perspective, the more we've discussed it with y'all, it is a much broader topic than one might have suspected. Obviously, I could bring back an ordinance with seven committee members on this racial equity committee and have the same application process that we've had on other committees. But in looking at this, we've looked at, I've looked at a lot of source materials, not only ordinances, but also the committee notes from other municipalities. And what I found from reviewing those is you've got opinions all over the board that are going this way and that way. And from our further research, the racial equity toolkit that we provided to you from the Local and Regional Government Alliance on Racial Equity is one of the better sources that we have come up with. And one of the things that it talks about is a broader vision of the transformation of government in order to advance racial equity. So that really is not, in my opinion and the shared opinion of staff, that is really not the prerogative of this committee. I think the committee should be what you decide and if there's going to be any transformation of government in the city of Meven, it needs to come from city council. And so what I'm looking for is discussion on what you think the objective and mission of this particular committee should be. In looking at this, there are a number of factors, a number of community organizations that have gotten involved in racial equity. Aliments Agents for Change push the eight K white for law enforcement and they're asking for meetings with our police chief as we speak. Obviously, you're aware of the WIRA resurrection, if you will, to look at the outlying areas of Meven for utility services and other racial equity issues as they may bring up. There are two or three other organizations that are working on this as well. In addition to this, we had a discussion with Impact Aliments today and they've been working, they've been looking at this subject matter for about a year. They are a tremendous community partner and have done a tremendous amount for the city of Meven over the last few years. They've been looking at this and they've been using the same racial equity toolkit. And they have outside consultants that they have used successfully and that they feel very good about. We have a meeting scheduled with Aliments, Impact Aliments on November the 23rd to continue that sort of discussion and we will share the results of that with you, obviously. Patty and Tommy Jones and I met with Tracy at the Historical Museum last Thursday and to make sure that Tommy, who's been leading the charge for the citizen charge of this, was fully on board. I talked with him, I shared this material with him and he is very comfortable that we're proceeding on the right path to address what his concerns are. Tracy also had worked in her career on these very issues as well. She has volunteered to come up with a questionnaire or application form for anybody that would be eventually interested in this committee that you established. But again, I'm looking for, staff-wise, we're looking for a mission and an objective and make sure that we can give the committee direction so that their expectations match your expectations and that we're all on the same song page. But it's 400 years of systemic racism. It's pretty hard to address in a span of 60 or 90 days. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have, but I really would like to hear y'all's thoughts on what you think the mission and objective to this committee should be.
Well, I I think this toolkit is excellent. But as you say, that seems like to me to be an internal document for for staff and council to use as far as determining on each issue whether we're looking at it from a fair and balanced way. The missing component that I see, from what I've heard, is the representation or the ability for external groups or external individuals to have a voice that where they could get information to the council and have impact or have input on issues that the city is considering without standing up and having to present to us or having to come before the council. That was what I thought the, just from what I heard in the public hearing and comment section was what they were looking for. What I had envisioned was maybe an inside and an outside member from each of the four quarters of the city and maybe one at large. That would be nine. And it could be any size, but would be a group of people where, as things were considered, whether it's annexation to the west or annexation to the east or a new development or corporate development or new recreation program or arc, where they could provide in an advisory capacity comments that they've heard from the community. Like, we always put parks on this side or we don't have this over here. And could provide that to us in a manner where it wasn't an exchange in the city council meeting, but it was a fair and equitable advisory statement coming from the community. That's what I was looking for, but I think that the equity toolkit, I think, is excellent. Start particularly for staff and us and decision-making on broader governmental issues, but that's what I heard. And I mean, you know, if that is, if that's all based and that's, that was sort of where I thought we were looking for as far as the committee and advisory capacity that people can come to express concerns that they may not necessarily feel comfortable coming directly to us with.
This, what you're thinking of is the advisory committee would look into it, investigate it, see what differences are, any racial disparities, given that concern? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, and in all forms. It doesn't, we don't have to say to them, how about investigating this and see what people think? They may come to us and say, you know, there is an issue that this neighborhood here is a racially diverse neighborhood and they don't have as close access to a city park as some of the others or they don't have a pocket park in their area or whatever. And that's just hypothetical. That's what I was thinking that we were looking for in the committee. Nothing, nothing to the extent of the toolkit, that something seems to me is structured and would require specific data and outcome-based decision-making. But more of a group to listen to what the community's saying and let us know what the community's saying, which, you know. Like I said, I may be, I may be all.
I guess, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. No, go ahead. I guess I support that greatly and I think the data component would would give better clarity to any racial disparities like what you're talking about right there, going from anecdotal evidence to actually statistical evidence. And if this committee could help out with that and present something, maybe we're blind as a council. Maybe we're not knocking certain doors or maybe we're missing out on certain parts of the town. I think this committee would be very vital to address those issues.
And for future development outside annexations and those kind of things as a thing. You know, this, in reading this toolkit, it, to me, the most important statement in this whole thing was this racial equity tool is an analysis applied to the city's policies, programs and budget decisions. And I think that's important and as we move, you know, forward into, in using the committee and using this as a toolkit for future decisions.
One of the things I really liked about this toolkit, and it's interesting that Tracy found this independently of loss and we all were working with different resources from different cities trying to find a good model. I think that because there are so many different organizations who are really motivated right now to move the dial on this issue that has not been moved in a long time, that we've had 15 or so people from the community talk about wanting to form this racial advisory committee. But the, and that's a wonderful thing. We have so much response from the community. But how is it structured? How does it work and how does the communication happen? And I think that this toolkit starts with, you know, what is the, you know, identifying your purpose. And I think it's going to take a meeting or two or more of folks coming together to discuss what is our purpose? How do we achieve it? And are there going to be measurable outcomes? Because just meeting and having a, you know, just meeting and having a chat about our grandkids is not going to move the dial, right? It's that we need to have some sort of structure in place. And I think that maybe that's the role the city can have, is helping to provide structure. And if there are analytics that need to be provided, the city's in a better position to find those. Impact Aliments is in an excellent position to provide those because they've done all of the demographic studies and that sort of thing for our entire greater community. So I see it as a group of folks who are able to advise us on things that we may not see, help us avoid unintended unintended consequences of our actions because of lack of knowledge and collaborate. So procedures, policies, moving forward to make sure that we're doing everything we can to have an equitable community. I think, so does that mean we have nine people or seven people? And I like your idea of people from different parts of the city geographically, but there are also parts of our city that are geographic, that are demographically mixed and parts of our community that are not very mixed demographically. So perhaps the greater weight of representation from one of those areas is appropriate. I think that this is a very big thing that we're talking about and taking our time to do it correctly and not just try to put a bandaid on a problem that needs major surgery is the way that I would like to see it proceed.
Patty, if I heard you correctly, it will be more of a dynamic, a dynamic committee which will be addressing issues from a variety of concerns throughout the community as well as a C Hall. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Well, if it's a city, if it's an advisory committee to the city, then I'm not sure what
C Hall would be involved here.
The government, city government, so
Right.
Not the pigeonhole the committee to do one thing, but to analyze a variety of items.
Well, I think that there are, yeah.
A holistic view.
A holistic view, and Mr. Lawson's cover sheet, Mr. Brown's cover sheet on this indicated some of the various components of municipal government where we may need to have this advisory committee weigh in. So I'm thinking that maybe if we can structure the committee, get applications, get it appointed some, and then allow that committee to meet a few times and have them determine the purpose and scope. And then bring it back to us because I don't want to put my opinions, logistics, advices on something that's coming from the community that they're asking us to do. So the more I read, the more I think I need to learn about this subject. So that's my comment.
That's great.
Well, what direction do we give the staff at this time? Well, I like that. I like the idea of moving forward with an appointment, letting them help us work out the specifics. I just want, I want, I want to make sure though that, that the scope of this thing remains realistic. And that is, this committee is not here to solve the world's problems. And as Lawson said very adequately in his letter, we don't have a lot of the problems that some cities are dealing with. We do not have subsidized governmental subsidized housing. We don't currently have a lot or any recognizable issue with law enforcement. Having said that, we do have issues, it seems to be, from what I heard, we do have issues with being able to communicate with some of the racially diverse neighborhoods. And that's what I think, that's why I said, it seemed to me that that would be the primary direction. How that, how that occurs and how the community communicates, I think is something that's going to have to be worked out over time. I've always, the reason I suggested staff put some proposals together, it's very difficult for us to sit in a public meeting and write a policy structure for a committee. Aaron presented us today with a rec committee. If we tried to do that in a public meeting, we'd have never gotten it done. So I guess that's why I suggested that there be some kind of document that we could put ready to, or we could bat around and discuss. But I'm good moving in any direction, I just think we need to move. And what I heard was the issue of communication with with some of the folks that are uncomfortable communicating directly. You know, some, from someone that hears them the way they want to be heard.
So do we go out for applications in the next month? You know, or what, how do, how do we, what's the next step?
Yeah, Lawson, could you help us with that, when you form the committee first and ask for applications?
Based on your discretion, I guess you could designate a committee as opposed to coming up with an ordinance that addresses it specifically. You could say, we're going to have a committee of seven to come up with the mission statement for you to, to bring back to you. And at the point you get the mission statement, we put it in an ordinance, whether that's 60 days out, 90 days out after you get these applications. And we, and we build the ordinance framework at that point in time.
And would you make this committee up out of applications? Would you recommend that? Or what would you thought to be there?
I think that this is new ground, and I think an application process would be entirely appropriate. Tracy at the museum has agreed to come up with a application form that we can bring back to you and let you all approve. And then we can start taking applications with the charge of those seven people, if that's what you come up with. And I suggest, I mean, we've all been members of church committees, and if you get more than seven people, it gets unwieldy. Once you get those seven people, they come back to you and tell you, okay, this is what we think Meven needs. And if you all concur with the thoughts that you stated tonight and additional thoughts going forward, then I can put that ordinance on in black and white, and you can
Tim, what were you saying earlier about geographical?
Well, I, I was just, I mean, I figured for equal representation, break the city into four quarters. And take one from inside and one from outside, like Patty said. You know, if you, if you look at the, well, I don't know that you, if you look at any quadrant that you're not going to have, you're not going to find. I mean, the Northeast, you're going to have the, the, the area down towards Perry Hill. I mean, in any direction you go, we have that white, white level on the, on the northwest. So it's, but that was just like one in, one out. That's a little larger than seven, that would end up being eight or nine, but I just, I think we need inside and out because the outside people have a lot of interest in extending city services. And, and a good example is, you know, we've had this question a thousand times. Annex West End or not Annex West End? None of us know the answer to what the people in West End would want without providing some kind of input. And if they, if they felt comfortable with doing that to this committee, then we would get the information straight from the, from the, from the people impacted. That's, that's totally what I'm looking for. That was just a suggestion, the four quarters, you could break it into halves.
But we had this, we've had this conversation recently about that very same point, and I think that's a great, a great point. So if there are areas that need to be looked at or annexed and through voluntary annexation, those kind of things, you know, we'd be open to it. And that, that this group can, this committee can really be a great asset for us as an advisory. They don't, you know, we don't, they, I don't know that we, they do the rules and regulations of city government, but there will be an advisory board to, to us as we move forward into the future. And that would be a, be a great asset.
Are y'all comfortable with me coming back next month with an application and a specific ordinance on the seven member committee to, for your action at that point in time? So at that point, you can start taking applications, recognizing that the goal is to let the committee set their mission?
You said ordinance, but you, I thought initially you were talking about an informal committee, but if you're, yes, my answer would be yes. I think if, if you brought that and there was a line in there that I have a particular problem with, that gives me the opportunity to say in writing, I don't like three E or whatever.
Okay.
We should be able to deliver that for December.
Oh, yeah.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Very good.
With that committee, you would want certain racial mix?
Exactly, that's the next thing I wanted, making sure, I was trying to think, kind of think how we could do, accomplish two goals. One is the geography and one is the racial.
That could be open ended, but that could be open ended, let, but what I hear you saying is it's sort of an open ended ordinance, just it's the beginning of an ordinance, just establishing the committee.
So it's just to start.
As you get applications and you're you start asking questions.
It's due round for all of us, I mean.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would probably do that as a preference. So precatory language as opposed to mandatory language on your racial and geographic. But I understand what you're saying.
As we've appointed people to the bicycle and pedestrian committee, we've found out that having two restrictive qualifications for where people are from means that sometimes we have an empty seat because we don't have anybody from outside that's applied. So I think that having a little bit of flexibility is probably a good thing.
Say three inside, three outside.
Yeah, I was just like, yeah, I was too outward and sad outside.
Three inside, three outside, one at large?
Okay.
All right.
And one more thing is just, I think we can find some money in the budget, but really I'd like to be able to talk to Impact Aliments, other facilitators that we would likely have to pay to come for those first meetings and just getting this process started. It has taken a lot of our time just trying to read all the things it could be. And we get questions almost daily about it, and we're trying to answer in a sort of a vacuum right now, so.
What kind of cost would you associate with that?
Well, I don't, I don't think you're talking about a significant amount of money. I don't know that yet. And Impact Aliments is talking about starting a a program, working with a facilitator to help communities like us through this process. So again, it's sort of a state of flux ever as to what we would even need at this point. But I, I really just want to have the freedom for staff to, you know, engage a facilitator.
We don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
It's already been.
That's very effective, that really means a lot right there. I know based on their tire of a lot over in Durham, trying to get this committee to go, a similar committee to go on, and it wasn't until the facilitator came in that.
Yeah, it's been very helpful.
That's great.
And I, again, we're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars. So it's just, we've got sufficient money to cover it. But I just wanted you to know, I wanted to give us the freedom to start, you know, talking to people about that.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, tomorrow's a big day. Yeah. If you haven't voted, please vote, please.
May I say something, please? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't want to jump on you, Mayor Hook, but about voting tomorrow. I think Stephanie has put this up back on the city's website again, just to remind people that the precinct places have changed for this election. If you used to vote at the fire station, you now vote at E M Yoder. If you used to vote at the Meven Arts and Community Center, you may still vote there, but you also might need to go to the old rec center. So you should look up your polling place, I know everybody in this room has probably already voted, but look up your polling place before you go stand in line, because you don't want to stand in the wrong line. Right?
Any, any other if any other additional items?
I'm, what were you doing?
Just one quick thing. Ever since Muse has come here and Mr. Barksdale's done the mural downtown, we're getting more folks interested in doing art around town. I'm hoping we can at least have a policy so we can direct folks coming out of that want to provide want to provide art to the community, that there's a path. So I don't think, is there anything written down yet?
Well, we had, we had a discussion years ago. I don't have a problem with the art, I do have a problem with the city panel. Unless we, unless we figure out some way to do it on a fair bid and grant basis. Because we had this discussion years ago with a mural on the side of the lodge building. And one mural was done downtown, thank you very much, at the expense of the store owner. So I think it's, I think the art's fine, we get a lot from the arts council, but I don't think, I don't think it should be the city's fun and proud unless we come up with a grant program where people apply evenly and fairly.
One thought, actually, you had last year was, four downtown was a facade grant program. We never really got around to talking about because of the pandemic. But people can paint a mural on the side of their building now and do whatever they want to. One, one
As long as it doesn't contain advertising.
Small boy. If, if the city, Graham's done a great job with murals. And there's people that are wanting to see more murals in Meven, and it is an attraction, it becomes an attraction. One thought we had was coming up with a facade grant program, but including murals in that. Where it would be some kind of matching deal because those murals aren't cheap. Especially if you have to finish the building correctly. So that is a, something we've, we've talked about internally on the facade grant idea.
Sid has been doing some research on that with his staff.
Yes.
I would just follow up with Chris's comment about as long as it doesn't contain a sign. But I think that the debacle that we recently had with that might be the kick that we need to, to have a discussion about our sign ordinance. There have been a lot of changes to sign ordinances in a lot of communities that have, I think are really good changes, and I feel like we're kind of behind the curve. I feel we're behind the curve on that, and this might be the time to tackle it. So I don't know if there's council interested in asking staff to spend some time on that, but I would love to see us.
Two minutes, two minutes, son.
I just need a timeline, because we can include it as part of the statutorily required U D O revision, which would come to you in roughly May. Or we can do it faster if you'd like.
I think, I think I'm good with May, I think that would be fantastic.
Yeah, but, yeah, we have to have something in place that we actually need to, we actually need to see the product. Not that we're artistic, we'll change it, but I mean, we got to be a little careful what, you know, we just didn't be careful. Somebody may be painting things that's quite offensive to a lot of people, and they call it art, and that's not. So we need to be, we need to be careful with how this thing, how this thing grows.
I think that can be easily done through a
Say it delicately.
Through a policy that basically prohibits us from charging a fee to review murals, but requires them to submit all murals.
And I think, I think that's different from signs, where they're talking about art and facades. And we're also talking about, I don't mean to confuse the situation.
Now, but there are rules and regs that go along with the sign or the mural. That's one of the biggest misunderstandings.
In response to Sean's question, I have, I have no problem with a fair grant program where I just, one artist comes up and says, I want to do this, we give them money to do it, that's not the way to handle it. I think if you want to take that grant program I wrote last year and change it and add murals to it, I think it'd be great.
Well, and this, just since you mentioned the art, I think Sean had sent y'all the tree art, which was pretty cool.
Yeah.
And he asked, you know, can we do this? And I hesitated a little bit because it's so public facing. One of the other things I think the city needs is a, an arts council, whether or committee. It doesn't have to be some expansive thing, but so far it's been Sandy and whoever the city manager is. And I will tell you, making a decision on one of these whirling gigs, you wrangle over it because you don't know how people are going to react to it. If I'd have just said yes to Sean's request, and even though it was very little, not much money, and I put the tree art out there, who decided to do this? That's always what I'm, the fact in my mind, so.
Why did Detroit trees?
Sandy has always been very good, but Sandy's not always going to be here. It might be good to think about getting artistic people on a committee to, to make those decisions, whether it be a small decision like the tree art or whether it be some longer term campaign where there's a whirling gig on every corner. Or, you know, there's, there's a wolf, you know how Raleigh does wolves and
And the eagle.
Wait, I've had, I've floated this thing for you. The eagles everywhere. Like the bears and dober. Look, Tim and I do, Tim and I are two, they're not going to be on the art.
If it's square, it looks good to me, though. But it is, it gives another opportunity for people to serve.
Yeah.
And, and a, and a way that they're talented in.
All right, any other additional items? You have United Way thing, fill them out, get them to be before you leave. Everybody, we need a hundred percent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.